Take the call of the meeting and call the roll.
A special session is being held on Thursday, January 16th, 2014 at 5:00 PM in the fifth floor conference room regarding progress on strategic goals and objectives, budget presentations, preparation topics and calendar and the radio project for funding issues. Roll call. Townsend, McKernan.
Here.
Murgia.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Kane. Markley.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Philbrook.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Holland.
Here. Thank you very much, Ms. Cobbins. We appreciate it. As has been stated previously, this is one of the Thursdays that we ordinarily would not have a commission meeting and the commission has asked for, certainly for the first quarter and perhaps moving forward, that we utilize that time for conversation about different topics. So we have some topics that were listed in the call today. We're going to talk about budget priorities and the budget calendar today, and then we're going to look at one of the budget priorities, which is the radio system. We have a couple of things before we get started. One, I want to welcome a fellow elected official, Mary Ann Flunder, a member of the Community College Board of Trustees. Welcome. It's good to have you here. We also want to welcome our new chief of police, our interim chief of police, Ms. Ellen Hansen, and we're delighted that you're here, though we're not delighted for the reason that you're here, but we have asked that you would come and brief the commission on an update on what you know about the situation outside.
Great. Well, I'm going to let Acting Colonel Davenport give you a basic rundown on what happened, but the most important thing, I think, for everyone to realize about this particular situation is, we have every indication that it was not random, that this was a targeted crime. So the fear level and the anxiety level about going out into that parking lot should not be impacted by this particular situation. We will have victim assistance on hand for anyone who needs it tomorrow. There were a number of witnesses. I'm not sure who saw what, but we want to make sure that the aftermath for the people that are here in City Hall and the Health Department is handled the right way.
Chief, can you back up just a moment? I think the commissioners are familiar with the situation, but can you give a brief overview of the situation for those who may not be familiar?
Sure. I'm going to let Fitz do that. He's got the best sense.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, commissioners, Ms. Hayes. So here's what we know now, and I will preface my remarks by just reminding you that we're in the very early stages of the investigation. It's only been going on for about an hour now. We have a team of major case investigators. We have eight detectives who are present here on scene following up leads and trying to determine what happened. But here's what I can share with the commission. We know that a 40-year-old man came to City Hall to conduct business with the court clerk's office, and at this time, we're not exactly sure what that business was. We believe he may have been here just to pay a fine or something of that nature. He arrived at City Hall at approximately 2:00 PM this afternoon. It appears that he concluded the business that he had about 3:08, and he left the building through the back doors on the east side of City Hall. We know that when he left the building, he walked out to the parking lot, and it was at that time that we know that, as best we can tell, a lone shooter came to him and came to him directly and shot him. And the suspect fled, and that's really all we really know as far as the facts as they stand. But I do want to reiterate what Chief Hanson has already stated, and that is that although this is clearly shocking, every homicide is shocking, but to have a homicide occur in such close proximity to the city center and here on the back steps of City Hall is particularly shocking, but there is no indication that anybody at City Hall was a target, that anybody was in danger other than this particular man for whatever reason. And, Mr. Mayor, that's pretty much the extent of what we can share at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate your hard work on this, and certainly our thoughts and prayers go out to the victim and the victim's family and to everyone who's working on this. So we appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. So to the business at hand, we have, in our strategic plan last fall, we identified a number of priorities. Probably the most significant change, while we left, by and large, our eight priorities intact, we did adopt a new budget calendar, and that was probably the most significant change to our calendar that we made. In order to accomplish that, you might remember that the first step in the budget calendar was a citizen's survey. That citizen's survey is being mailed out, I believe, in the next week. That survey is completed. The commission all had input on what that survey said. That's going to go out, and we will get those results back. The goal, of course, is to get citizen input on the priorities for our community as we get ready for our budget. Also, we've set a first budget hearing very early this year, and we're working hard to get this word out to the public, which is February 6th. So February 6th, people will have an opportunity and come and make a budget presentation and discuss what they would like to see in terms of the commission's use of priorities. So what we're going to do is we're going to take that information from the public on February 6th, and we're going to take the citizen's survey that will be completed. And on May, or, excuse me, March 8th, and I have a calendar in front of you, and, do we have a calendar in front of you? No, we don't. I'm the only one looking at the calendar. We should, we should fix that. I am confident that this will go much more smoothly if we're all looking at the same document. All right. So everyone has the calendar. So what we have are listed, on the left-hand column are the originally approved commission meeting dates. The center column are the three new dates for this first quarter, January 16th, February 13th, and March 13th. I've also received requests from different commissioners in terms of items that you would like to see on discussion for the commission, and I've listed those. What I've done is some of those, I've put in the budget prep topics for the first quarter. And then on the bottom, you can see for second quarter, there's a number of other requests that are not as directly related to the budget and perhaps could wait for the second quarter. So what we have then is, tonight, we're going to talk about our goals and objectives, the budget prep, and the radio project, which is a very expensive project that we've been undertaking for a number of years, and will have budget implications this year. Next, on the 23rd, in addition to the regular, when we have a full commission meeting or planning and zoning, the column on the right is an additional topic that we're going to work in, either at the 5:00 or the 7:00. But we have a 5:00 session next January, next Thursday, the 23rd, that will cover the CNIP, the Commissioner Neighborhood Improvement Project listing, and you'll get a full update on that and have an opportunity. It'll really be the first time since projects have been completed for the commission to hear a report and to kind of dive down into how that's going. It seems to be going very well, and so I think that'll be a very positive report. Also, on January 30th, then, we'll have a CMIP update and new requests, looking at major development issues, and there's a number of commissioners, including the Downtown Grocery Store Group that's looking for money for community planning projects, and we really need to talk about that because these requests are coming in regularly, and we don't have a planned model for which ones we would prioritize, and I think we need to think about how we would do that. And we historically have not set aside money for planning projects. We're typically lucky to have money to do projects, but it'd be nice to plan some. So that's what we're looking at in January. In February, a presentation on open data and innovation. I think that is going to be a big part of cutting costs at the city and thinking about how we do things, and we'll also have our first public budget hearing. On the 13th, looking at a jail population committee report, we have two of our commissioners, McKernan and Walters, who were appointed to that committee, and there will be a report that night about kind of the state of the jail and the costs associated with that as well. We also, as you know, we're working on the administrator's selection process. Our goal, and we are on target for this, is to have administrator's selection process on February 20th, and the hope that, assuming everything stays on calendar as it's designed, that we would even be in a position to make the vote on February 20th. So that, we are on schedule for that. Also, there was a discussion regarding permanent commission liaison positions. This was requested by Commissioner Walker. This topic is budget-related, which is why it's up in this section. There was a discussion about wanting to think through as a commission, what kind of staffing is most beneficial and helpful, and I think we need to have that full conversation before the budget because it may have budget implications. We are moving forward hiring an interim that would fill that role until a budget decision can be made, and depending on how that budget decision's made, that interim could be in place until the summer or until the 1st of January next year. So that's a budget-related item. Also, we will be discussing labor negotiations. We do have our March 8 strategic plan that will be here in this room with Patty Gentrop, our moderator, and then presentation regarding data and analysis for public safety. That ties back, again, to the open data innovation piece on March 13th, and March 20th will be a commission finalized budget priorities. Now, all of these topics that are included were for either 5:00 or 7:00, these special discussions. Those do not include whatever entertaining topics will come to us against our judgment, right? The city business happens, things come up, and we have topics that we have to discuss. So this manages to take all of those topics and put them at least in a process timeline in terms of moving them back and forth. Now, on the bottom, I have other requests, and I've had a number of commissioners who have given me requests, either by email or by phone, for topics that you're interested in discussing. So I have those listed on the bottom. The TIF report requested by both commissioners Walters and Walker, we've had some discussion about that. That's an intensive analysis that needs to be done by our financial department, which is challenging with end-of-the-year financial stuff and budget preparation stuff. So they have asked if they could move that into the second quarter. That's an important conversation. Nevertheless, there has been a request by both Walker and Murgia to look at the Code of Ethics and at the Charter Ordinance, to have discussions on both of those. There's also been a request on a utility line insurance program. This is an item that Commissioner Maddox had brought up previously, but it's also an item that Commissioner Walker and myself saw and discussed at the National League of Cities meeting. There's also an executive session, well, that's always going to happen, quarterly litigation update. There's also requests by Commissioner Philbrook to look at animal control and how they're working with the Humane Society. So we have that there, and workforce development and Mamtech. Commissioner Philbrook and Maddox are the commission liaisons to our workforce development, and there's an exciting state program Mamtech that we'll be taking advantage of, that you'll be hearing more about, but the commissioners, I think it'd be important for all of us to be up to date on that work. So this is really, as we get through the first quarter, my intent is to do this quarter by quarter and continue to plug in topics as they're requested, and to continue to make sure that we have a rhyme and a reason to them, knowing that if something comes up that we have to deal with, we're going to have to adjust time in our calendar. And this actually happens all the time. This is every Monday, actually, the staff is working on the topics. Does this group have their presentation ready to go? No, why not? Well, something came up and they're behind. Can we bump them to another week? Is there another group ready to go that we can bump up? So this is not written in stone. It is written, in fact, on paper. So yes, Commissioner.
I just had a question about this open data and innovation presentation. So I have a constituent that I think has actually been in contact with somebody in IT or in mapping who has actually mapped our land banks, so you can click on a land bank property and pops up information about it. So I'm curious if his contact with our departments is involved in any way in the fact that this presentation is occurring, and whether that's sort of part of the discussion that's going to happen at that presentation, is what data's out there? Are we okay with people using it to map those sorts of things? I'm just curious.
No, that's a really good question. One of the things that is increasingly clear to me, particularly as I've been involved in seminars and other things, and talking to other mayors and seeing what other cities are doing, we've got to be making data-driven decisions. I mean, we go on hunch a lot in terms of what we think's going to work, but there's really a need to have data-driven opportunity. And the innovation field right now is really getting big, and so there's really several layers to it. And I think the goal of this presentation, we're not going to resolve, I mean, there's so much data, but I want to get a presentation in front of you in terms of what the possibilities are. What you're describing in terms of using the GIS mapping that we already have, plugging in the addresses that we already have of all of the properties, there are many cities where, you know, right now, if you want to know how a property is zoned, you have to call into the Planning and Zoning Department, and you have to leave a message, and they look it up, and they call you back and tell you when it is. A lot of cities are just posting that data online. People are pulling up the address, clicking on it, and they'll see how it's zoned, they'll see ownership. It's all public information, right? So it's all of the register of deed stuff is loaded on there. Also, all the code enforcements loaded on there. You might be interested in this, where you can see actually where the code violations are or if there's any outstanding warrants right now.
You know, it's amazing. At our last Neighborhood and Community Development Standing Committee, and this is something we need to follow up and get to the rest of you, but Commissioners Murgia and Walters, I don't know about the two of them, I was stunned how much data we actually have and have available to the public.
Yeah.
And have available to commissioners. But I don't know about the rest of you. I wasn't sure how to get to all of that.
It's not accessible.
That's it.
And one of the things that we identified that night was, if we can just get some tutorials on how to get to it, we already have a ton of stuff out there. So that's one of our follow-ups from our last committee, and hopefully we'll have a follow-up by the time it comes to our.
Yeah. Well, and this gentleman, I mean, he literally just pulled the information himself and programmed it in, you know, just volunteered to do it. He thought it was cool. He wanted to see if he could do it, and he did, and I can email you his results. The concern is, he doesn't want to be doing that without our authorization, and so that's why he was talking to our mapping department and trying to figure out if this was something we wanted to use and how he could get it to us. But he even said, we were chatting back and forth about the possibilities, and I said, one thing that I'd love to see is if, you know, we have our streets program, and people always want to know, when is my road getting overlaid? When was it overlaid last? If we had a map where people could click on it and see, mine was last done 20 years ago, and it's, you know, not even planned to be done again until this year, or mine's coming up next year, and I should be happy, yay. Obviously, that's alternative, but that's the kind of information our residents want to be able to see, and I think it would help them just to see that we are actually doing roads, because I think sometimes if your road isn't getting done, you just think nobody's road is getting done. So to be able to see that map and know, look, all these streets did get done last year, I think would be awesome. So sometimes I think, we only think to give people information because they need it, not necessarily because it would just be good for them to have it or they would like to have it. So I'm hoping that at some point in this sort of open data discussion, we're going to get to the point where we talk about some of those opportunities to put information out there, not because it has to be or is required to be out there, but just because it would be great for our people to have.
Well, and take that to the next level as well. Not only do we know when a street's scheduled for overlay, but we also know the age of the pipes underneath it, and we know the age of the sewer underneath it. And so when we're getting ready to spend conservative estimates of $200, $250 million in combined sewer overflow repair, it would be really handy to know where we're going first with that sewer overlay, where the other utilities are, when we're going to coordinate our street, because one of the things that, as I've gone to some seminars on this, is that what was happening in a lot of cities, and our Public Works Department works very hard with the utilities and with BPU to make sure this doesn't happen, but it's done, it's all, they each have a computer, but they don't necessarily have the computer interface with each other. So you have three different computers, and you have people working to try to coordinate it. A lot of cities were having the issue, and we have this too. We finished paving a street, and then a utility comes and cuts it within six months. And there was a city that said they had up to 50% of their streets were cut within the first six months after it was paved. 50% of the streets cut by another utility. And the utilities have a CMIP plan, just like we do. They know that they're trying to get to the water mains and all the older infrastructure on a rolling basis. Now, granted, things happen, things break, and you have to go in and do it on an emergency basis, but they also have a rule, a law, that if you cut a street within the first year that it's been paved, you don't get to patch it. You paved the whole city block. So it really has incented the utilities to be more aware of their own planning and coordinating it with the city. So there's so much more that we can do with it that's really, I would say, exciting, and it's also a tremendous opportunity for cost savings and for leveraging our dollar. This kind of innovation is going to be big. The other thing they have, you know, looking at GPS on our public works routes and doing computer analysis of where we're driving. You know, UPS, on their trucks, their delivery trucks, they have GPS on them, and they route them out. I mean, they have a computer that designates what direction you're going to drive, and they even have a rule, you can only make right turns, because they found that sitting in a left turn lane for a stoplight costs you more gas than actually driving around the block and only making right turns to go left. So there's all this analysis that if you have the data and you have the capacity to manage it, because I'm going to suggest, we don't have the data, we don't have the capacity to manage it, much less use it, and mine that data, and then put it online. You know, people do Freedom of Information requests all the time. We want to know about this. We want to know about this. I would say anything that someone could ask for a Freedom of Information request should already be online. If it's public information, it should already be online. So let's put it out there and do it in a manageable way so that people can utilize it. I think there's great opportunity for this, to really take it to another level. So you're going to see, we're going to get a preview of that and what's possible on February 6th. So we're working to put that together. All right. Any other questions or comments in terms of this plan? Does this plan look workable to folks? Are there adjustments that you want to see? Yes, Commissioner Walters?
Just a couple of questions. I remember, I think it was Commissioner Kane who brought up the Charter Ordinance issue when we were together back in October, November, and I thought there was discussion at that time that if we're going to talk about this, we need to do it quickly because we're trying to hire a new county administrator, and there were some comments made that we should know what the rules are and the environment before we hire a new county administrator. Has something changed there, or am I misremembering that?
I remember the conversation at the meeting, and I think we can add Kane's name to that. I did get an email. Commissioner Murgia emailed it to me, and Commissioner Walker emailed it to me. My view is a little different. My view is that if we're trying to hire a county administrator, I think it would be not a good time to be looking at the Charter Ordinance in terms of people trying to apply to the job. I think it's better to, I don't know, I think that would perhaps hurt the candidates if they think that their job description may change. I think keeping that discussion to the second quarter. I don't think we shouldn't have the conversation. I'm just saying, I think it's better placed outside of the selection of the administrator. Yes?
I, uh...
Microphone, please.
I had this discussion, and the mayor outlined to me his thinking on that. I also, at the time, was thinking that if I were applying for this job, I'd want to have some disclosure that the commission is going to look at the possibility of some changes that might impact the manner of doing business. Now, none of the changes that I've discussed will impact the job description of the county administrator. It may impact, it may impact the circumstances under which the tenure of the county administrator is determined, and basically the hiring and firing. There are other aspects to that that will probably no doubt be discussed. Whether there's sufficient interest or sufficient support remains to be seen. I would hope that in the process, there is some disclosure to the candidate that this, if you're going to delay it on the premise that we're going to hire this guy and then do a contract.
Or gal.
Huh?
Or gal.
I'm sorry. Yes. Sorry, you're politically correct.
Toys and gals.
Whoever it is that we might hire is aware that there are possibly going to be some changes to it that may impact how he views his responsibilities, although the fundamental job description is certainly not on my purview of thinking. I think that's an adequate description of what the duties are. But the rules of any game change as the game evolves. I could use baseball or football analogies, but, you know, nothing is static, and change is inevitable. So whether this was the time there'll be change or not remains to be seen. But I would hope you would disclose to him there is this discussion that's on the horizon.
Or her.
I'm slow learner.
I think one of the things that really helps, strengthens our position to hire, is the strategic planning work that's already been begun over the last two and three years. I think that's very strong. I think that we have a clear direction for the new county administrators, very strong. And I think this kind of calendar of organization of taking on the topics in a methodical way is helpful as well. So I think we have a strong position. The recruitment process is going very well. We're getting strong candidates, so I'm feeling very optimistic about how the process is going. So I think the other piece, if we're going to get to our strategic planning on March 8th, with an intent of having data from the people in terms of the survey, and having the public hearing, and having some major financial pieces in terms of jail population, this radio program, some of the other major departmental issues, and CMIP in front of us, I would suggest that prioritizing that conversation in the first quarter would be a better use of our time. And I think we need to have it. The request has been made. I have said I would honor that request, and so I want to, and by putting it on here under second quarter, that keeps it from sliding to, well, we'll do it third quarter. Well, maybe third quarter next year. You know, if we put it on here on a calendar of intended topics, and as you continue to, topics come up, we can continue to add them to the list so that there is a reasonable opportunity when we put the second quarter, I can't say this quickly, the second quarter calendar together, then we can make sure that we've plugged in with the dates in a thoughtful way, and we can reassess, do we want to use our otherwise off Thursdays? Again, we may want to. There may be a season while we need to use those regularly to make sure we're covering the topics at hand. Yes?
Go ahead. I think you go first.
I appreciate the schedule in which I see here, but I'm not sure that it reflects the ones or ideas of all of the commissioners. I wasn't consulted about maybe the priority in which we approached them. It seems that most of the things that were put off to the second quarter, from my understanding, what other commissioners had mentioned in the past, were more important than being put into the topics of the second quarter. So I'm not sure of how the priority came into place with the whole scheduling process, but I think there are some things that were scheduled for the second quarter that many of the commissioners feel should be discussed earlier than later. Me personally, the Code of Ethics discussion, that was important to me as well. I didn't send an email to you, but I think it's important because many of the commissioners feel that it's an unfair Code of Ethics, and I think that that's something that we should approach sooner than later than just putting it off and putting it off, is my personal perspective.
Commissioner Murgia?
My question's a little bit, my question's a little bit different. It's more about process, and I've already admitted, process is not my strong suit, so I'm open to suggestions on this. So, since I've been here, the past six years we've been here.
Seven.
Seven now. Past seven years that we've been here. What usually happens is we get something that tells us we're having a meeting. Let me just use an example. Let's say we're going to talk about the Charter Ordinance, and that's on the agenda, and we show up to this meeting, and then somebody leads a discussion. But there's not really any information typically prior to those meetings. There's really not been any work done prior to the meeting. Do you know what I'm saying? So sometimes I think there's more of a sense of urgency with me, and I'll speak for me in particular, because I know that work isn't even going to start on these issues until a meeting is held and direction, until there's more clear direction. Do you know what I'm trying to say? So maybe, and I don't know how to do this, I really don't, maybe, I'm really open to either way, in all honesty, but maybe what we do is, for these topics, for people that wanted to bring them forward, and I surely don't need any more work, so I'd gladly surrender my position on the Charter Ordinance or the Ethics to Terrence, but maybe if we, maybe if we had a couple of commissioners take these topics and work them, the ones that wanted to bring them forward, and then at least, if they are going to be pushed off to the, if this group decides and you decide to push them off to second quarter, that at least they're coming to the table second quarter with some kind of proposal and direction on those. Does that make sense to everyone?
I think potentially it does. I mean, we could give, I mean, I'm working off of the budget calendar that was adopted last fall, put a huge priority of work in the first quarter. That was a... That was a decision that was made by this committee, this, this commission to make sure that we wanted to start the budget much earlier. I would say if we didn't have the origi, if we didn't have the new budget calendar, we probably could do that. Though, I will say, there was a discussion about the budget calendar, there were some folks that worked on that ahead of time because they were interested in it and then they brought it to the commission. One of the things that I want to, one of the things that I am very aware of in this role is, as I'm talking to staff and we come up with lots of great ideas, we run into capacity issues in terms of the staff, in terms of working them. And so one of the reasons for spreading them out to some level is we need the staff support, one, to gather the information, two, to, to present the information and then to do something about the information. And so I'll give, I give the example again of the TIF report. It's an eminently complex report and our chief financial officer said, well, based on what else you've given me, I don't know that I'm, my staff are going to be able to give it the time that it needs and it's, it's more complex. That's a completely legitimate request. So we just need to space and time our topics because to make sure we have capacity issues in each, in each group to provide support for the commissioners. Though, I don't know that there would be an issue if people wanted to do, if you knew, the other benefit of having a calendar is if you know something's coming and it's a topic you've worked on, then you know when to anticipate it so that you can start working on it. Now, there's not dates for the second quarter yet, but we can start filling that in as well so we can get April, May, June lined out. And if, and then if we know a date that we could, we're going to work on it, folks who are interested in that can work towards that date. And hopefully that would, Commissioner McKernan?
Well, to kind of follow up on Commissioner Murgia's comment here, I mean, this is a conversation we've had about just our whole agendas regarding standing committee and regular commission meeting
Yes.
And trying to space out the time so the people who want to thoughtfully review materials ahead of time have the time to do it. So I guess you're suggesting maybe that just as we took the budget calendar and pre-prepared a proposal, that people, one or more people might be identified for each topic who could then think ahead about
Yeah.
How that topic would be discussed and think ahead what materials ahead of time might make good background reading and then have a framework.
Yeah.
And in, in general, I understand the capacity issues, but in general, I, I certainly support trying to, to space out those things because it is, there are some nights we get here and it's like, wow, that's a lot of material and trying to absorb it. So maybe to start thinking ahead and we'd have to come up with the actual procedure for that, but I can see some value in trying to have at least some advanced reading material.
So I'm better with examples, as you know.
Okay.
So let me be specific, and I don't know that this is the right solution, but let me see what, what I would think as a, as a good option. And there's a lot of ways to do this. We know from legal cases that we hear about here at the unified government that we outsource a lot of legal work. And I don't know what the budget is for that. And I'm not saying that's a good or bad thing, but in this case, clearly if we're reviewing code of ethics and a charter ordinance, that involves reading statute and that involves, would need the help of legal assistance. If there are two or three commissioners willing to reach out to the other commissioners on their own time and get feedback about concerns they have with those documents and then have the ability to work with outside counsel to bring forward those suggested changes and vet that in advance of the meeting, in advance of the second quarter meeting, then I think things would move a lot faster and a lot more efficiently. Now, if you're, I don't know what our budget is for outsourcing legal work, but I would tell you, one of the reasons I was supportive of holding up on, on hiring the commission liaison position is that it freed up a pot of money in regard, in their salary. And if the commission had access to that money to be able to utilize, maybe outsource and get some assistance outside of our regular staff to address some of these issues, to bring those proposed changes, I mean, I think it would be more efficient. I think it would use everybody's time better and it wouldn't overburden staff.
Well, and I think, I think that the counterpoint to this, and I don't disagree that doing prep work ahead of time is beneficial. One of the things, though, that I think would be very helpful is when we have an initial conversation about something is to kind of gain the scope of what the commission's consensus is in terms of what we're going to look into. You know what I'm saying? Because what I don't want to do is, and this happens with some regularity, that we'll, we have a great idea and we ask staff to look into it. So staff spends X number of hours and there, we didn't give them enough clear direction in terms of what to work on and we're not using their time wisely. You know what I'm saying? And so we, I think having an initial conversation to tee these things up, for instance, if we're going to talk about open data and innovation, well, rather than having us, I want to have an initial presentation and have people initially talk about it to see what issues matter to the commission so that we can spend resources on getting that data or working on that issue. Because I think as we get into these other issues, whether it's ethics or whether it's the charter or whatever, we need to have a pretty clear understanding and a consensus among us. Because one of the things I don't like is when one or, or two of us who have an idea work a lot of staff time and then it turns out there's not consensus on the commission to even do that. So if we can develop a consensus about what we want done, then we can allocate the resources as the commission, that's our job, is to allocate the resources to accomplish the task, whether it's personnel resources or financial resources or both. That gives us an opportunity to really understand kind of where we're headed. So I think there's a both and in terms of having preliminary conversations and maybe we could even put in here preliminary conversations, because some of these we haven't even, we've never even talked about before. So we start with a preliminary conversation and get it teed up, get a framework for what we want to do. And then we put on the calendar a follow-up date because I think, Commissioner, one of the things that happens is we say, oh, we'll work on that. And that's a pretty nebulous timeframe. And one of the things I've heard from you all is you want a less nebulous timeframe to know when we're working on things, correct?
Well, it's that
And I think that's fair.
It's, it's also the date, but it's also that, believe me, Mayor, I hear what you're saying. And you don't want one person speaking for everybody when everybody doesn't agree or two people doing that when everybody doesn't agree. But I think the piece of consensus, we have consensus. Everybody, nobody around this table is saying, at least to my knowledge, otherwise you wouldn't have put them on the agenda, that we don't have consensus on addressing these issues.
No, I would say
So we already know we have consensus
No, I think that's, I think that's a fallacy. I believe that you have, individual commissioners have asked me to put things on for conversation to see if there's consensus. Because depending on what you want to talk about on utility line insurance program, I've heard a presentation on that. It seems like a good idea to me. We've both heard it and Commissioner Maddox has heard it. That's three of us. That doesn't mean we have a consensus to move forward until we've talked about it. I don't think anything on here is a consensus item because we haven't worked it. Now, what is a consensus item is the budget calendar that this group adopted. That was a clear consensus item. We talked about it, we worked it and we adopted it and we're implementing it right now. And we're spending significant staff hours implementing the budget plan that this commission adopted last fall. We have, we're, we've bumped up everything that they used to do in the spring into the winter. We bumped it up a whole quarter and more. So we're having conversations about CMIP. We used to have CMIP in June. We're having, we're having CMIP in January. I mean, that's a six-month bump
Yeah.
To get to the topic better because we all said, it's not enough time. So we adopted a new budget process. So we don't have a consensus on, I think we have an agreement that we'll talk about these issues, but a willingness to talk about an issue doesn't mean that animal control human, humane society, Commissioner Philbrook wants to learn more about that. I don't know that we have a consensus what to do about that. I don't even think we have a consensus that we want, I mean, we need to hear about it and then we need to decide as a commission, do we want to spend any time or energy on it? I'd say the same thing as the charter. Some folks want to talk about it. That's a long shot from saying that there's a consensus on the commission that we want to change anything. You know what I'm saying? So I think that, I don't think we can say anything that we have on here when it says discussion means that we have consensus. Yes?
Can I just say, I just feel like we're kind of talking down two different paths right here and so I'm going to try to kind of clarify what I think the discussion point is. So, you know, when Brian and I were concerned about the budget schedule, we didn't really have a consensus. We hadn't sat down with every commissioner and said, are you okay with moving this schedule back? But what Brian and I thought is, it's a lot easier to sit down and look at something and say, yes, I like this, no, I don't like that, that's not going to work, you know, and kind of walk through the points a bit than it is to sit down and say, okay, all these thirty people in the room, how do you feel about the budget calendar? Because that kind of discussion, it's just so wide open that it's difficult to start to pare down, you know, what options are available, really. So I think what Commissioner Murgia is saying is, not necessarily that two commissioners are going to decide what route we go, but that at least those couple of commissioners could sit down and say, when we get into this meeting on X date in April, what, you know, what kind of topics are out there and how can we help direct the commission so that we can sort of logically guide a discussion? Not necessarily that they're going to say, this is the draft, do you guys like it or not like it? But at least that those commissioners that are maybe sort of unofficially assigned those topics could come to the table with something because I'm afraid if we all sit down at the table and we say, okay, today's the day for the ethics discussion, go, that it's just going to be so unbridled, we're not going to make any progress, where if we had a commissioner who said, okay, let's walk through this this way, you know, these are some of the concerns that have been expressed, these are some of the options that might be available, here's maybe what some other cities are doing, at least we would have that basis to start with instead of sort of running them up.
Well, and I would say, when we were all sitting at the budget hearings on the sixth floor, not near NICE's room is this new one, yes? When we were sitting in the budget hearings, there was a strong consensus from this group that said, the budget cycle is too short. We want to expand it and breathe some air into it and look at changing it. And there was a consensus to ask, you two volunteered to work on it, there was a consensus at that point to say, look at it and see what you can bring to it. What that did is as you all worked on crafting that, you had thereby, you know, you were talking, you got feedback from folks, and it opened the door for you to work with the staff because the staff had actually looked at your calendar and made some adjustments to it because it was, there's some state things that interfere with that. But what it did is it gave a clear message to the staff, this is a priority of the commission, there's consensus to work with this group, so give them the time that they need to bring it forward. So I think the initial conversation that we have is important. I would say, I am, it, it depends on what we're talking about, about whether or not there's a consensus to even look into it. I think that's a fair statement from me. I would want to know what the topic is before we decide whether, how much time or energy we're going to spend on it. Now, I also think, given, given that, it's going, if we're going to do these conversations right, they shouldn't be rushed, but they shouldn't be stagnant either. I think there's a balance. Now, if we're going to keep the budget calendar, everything that's on here for the first quarter is pretty heavy budget-related stuff. So I think that's a, I, that's, this is my personal opinion, I think it's a better way to go. If there's a, if there's a desire to bump up a conversation, you know, we can talk about it. I think we're going to have to ask, what part of the budget are we not going to work? Commissioner McKernan?
Well, how about if, if we can just maybe, and maybe we assign this to like maybe the folks who put it up, at least to assign some background readings, you know, if, if there are documents or materials that would be helpful for all of us to have read so that we're grounded in the environment of the discussion, so that we don't show up cold and have to come up to speed and spend some of our meeting time coming up to speed. So maybe people could, could volunteer to also identify what would be good prep work on the part of the commissioners so that we show up prepared to engage in a discussion even if the specifics of that discussion aren't in advance.
So I would say, one thing that people could do is if you had, we'll use the animal control humane society, if there are particular things you want to do, you could write, you could take one piece of paper and do bullet points of things that you want to know about that. And at, and we can see, you know, one of the things that I ask is how much time, I ask this every day, how much time would this be to figure out? And sometimes, albeit rarely, he says, oh, we can get that today. Sometimes he says, well, we can get that, but it's going to take a little bit of time, which by the way comes back to my open data point of so much of the data, we take too much time finding, we need to be able to find it right now. But I think that we could, if you have an idea of what you want, Commissioner Walker and Murgia and Kane want to talk about the charter ordinance. If you wanted to draft up the portions of the charter ordinance that you wanted to talk about specifically and you wanted us to read those ahead of time, then you could give that to us ahead of time and we could read it ahead of time. So we'd all come into the conversation ready to go. I mean, I don't know any reason, now, the next step of, are we going to expend resources, you know, how, are we going to hire outside counsel to do that initial work? I don't think so. I think we don't hire outside counsel to craft, it's the same thing we've talked about. And I'll give the example of the, the property acquisition that we've talked about with the T-bones. We did not, we gave a general nod to yes, look into this as on principle and we had to work to get to consensus even for that, right? And then on print, and then if we had not given that direction for the, for the staff, they would not have spent the countless hours they're spending on that T-bones deal right now. What we don't want to do is say, why don't you spend countless hours on the T-bones deal? And then after all those hours are expended, money and time we can't get back, then we'll tell you if we're even moving in that direction. So that would be my suggestion.
Wait a minute, we're probably going to say Mayor, but there was significant staff time and money spent on that project before it came in front of us to develop consensus.
No, and actually I would, I would agree with that.
Yeah, but it is a lot of, listen, Mayor, I really appreciate what you're trying to do here and I think this is way better and I love it that you're willing to put these on the agenda and I mean, you know, I'm absolutely, if, if this is what you like, that's great. I'm simply just saying, listen, I respect all of these commissioners and if Commissioner Philbrook has an issue with animal control and humane society, and let's say I don't, though I do have concerns about animal control, but
I know that, you've already told
So, but let's say I don't have any issues. I'm totally fine with any commissioner bringing forward and discussing that issue. For example, I will admit, I will fall in the sort here, I have no idea what the utility line insurance program is. And frankly, since in six years, seven years, I've never gotten one call or never even heard about it, I don't really care, to tell you the truth.
You will if your water line or your sewer line breaks.
That's my point. So my point is this, each one of us bringing a different skill, a different mindset and a different perspective and we are all professionals here. And so if Commissioner Maddox and you want to bring that particular issue forward, instead of feeling the need to brief us on every single facet of the utility line insurance program, I trust that everything's working smoothly other than the issues that Commissioner Maddox and yourself have. So for efficiency reasons, I trust things are go, I trust people, I think things are going fine. But if there is particular sections or particular parts of a topic that people have issues with, I'm just saying, to get things moving forward faster, that's why I'm saying, if, if commissioners have an issue with a particular topic they bring forward, that's parts of the issue. It's, and then I think what that commissioner should do is give the other commissioner say, Commissioner Philbrook, do you have any issues with ethics? And if she says, no, haven't really read it, really haven't had any thoughts about it, then we move on. And then, but when we present it, we present the issues that are, that are of concern for those bringing it forward. And if the commission collectively decides, you might be concerned about that, Commissioner Murgia, I'm not, then so be it. And I just think, that's all I'm saying, would be, I just think would work a little more efficiently. There's no reason we all need to understand all the details of the topic.
Walker, Philbrook, McKernan?
We need buttons. In our brand new room, we need buttons. I think that the, the issue on some of this, certainly some of this is going to impact budget that we're talking about, perhaps. I think one of the things that some commissioners have discussed with me is the feeling that we are solely dependent on staff and their time schedule. I know, having been staff, that there's a full load in the legal department on a regular basis. If no commissioner even asks for anything, there's plenty of work to do. It doesn't seem to ever abate to where there isn't anything for them to do. I'm sure the same is true in Lou's department. But we get an enormous amount of information and materials and we're expected to do that without any assistance except as staff can be provided to us to do that. Most staff tries to accommodate the commission or commissioners as, as they can. I'll use what used to be the Johnson County model. Johnson County and their county commission, which by the Johnson County and their county commission, which by the way, has fewer people than we do, had their, what you would call their own in-house legal counsel. And that counsel's sole job, and I don't know anything about salary or benefits, it would be far less than what you would pay outside counsel to work on a full-time basis. His job was to prepare ordinances or in their case, resolutions, policies, documents that a commissioner might want to have done and then have a hard copy and then meet with his fellow commissioners and work and, and get a consensus. That's often the way it's done. And part of the issue on the commission liaison is, is there has been a variety of ideas about what the role of this person should be, but one of the roles of this person, and I'll use a title because titles are good around here, salaries don't quite follow titles, Chief of Staff for the commission. We have administrative functions, you know? Who decides whether we, we're going to have dinner tonight? That's the, that's our-
We decided. I asked you specifically in the last meeting if you wanted dinner and you said, "No, you wanted to be out by 6:30."
Well, I don't-
That's who decided.
Okay. The issue is, who, who decides what our budget presentation, what, it doesn't matter. It's, it's a-
I'm just answering the question. Can we read the minutes from last meeting?
We have administrative decisions that need to be made as a commission. For example, our budget. I don't recall when I was staff, ever hearing about the commissioners preparing their own budget requests. One was prepared for them. It was put into the budget and I guess they had the opportunity to, you know, kick it up or kick it down, whatever they wanted to do. Those kinds of things are not being done. There's literally no, I can't go to a, a staff person and dictate, "Get this done for me tomorrow." But if I had a staff person, a chief of staff or, or a legal, a lawyer that was assigned either from the legal department for a period of time or a employee, which of course requires a charter change, which is one of the charter changes, that this person would work for the commission on some kind of two-year, four-year, what, a contract. I mean, obviously you have elections every two years and if I were going to take the job, I wouldn't take it for two years without a contract. I mean, those are the kinds of questions that, that need to be debated. And obviously, that's going to have budget impact in the first quarter, although we could certainly address it in the second quarter before we adopt the budget.
Right. And that issue, I mean, and this is back to Commissioner Murgia's point, is if you have, you, you have specific ideas about the discussion regarding the commission liaison position. You have very clear ideas.
That's what I was just going to say. Hal just demonstrated the point. Certain commissioners have very certain ideas they want to discuss.
That's right. So, the more you bring to that meeting and the sooner you get it to the commissioners to review, knowing it's going to come up on this February 27th discussion, the more fruitful the conversation we will have in terms of-
Well, see, the difference is, Mark, I, I-
Oh, we wanted to get across.
I, I, I have-
The light, the light just went on.
Yes, that's it. That's it. You have a point.
Personally, I, I have the capacity, I may not be able to do all the typing, but I have the capacity to draw up an ordinance and draw up a resolution. I can do the amendments to the charter at home and I can do everything that I would want to do. As a commission, there is no capacity to do that. They aren't, I don't think. I mean, we do have some lawyers, but I don't know that they've ever done that kind of work.
I have, actually, but-
But that's, that's the whole point.
Yeah.
You know, we're barefoot and blind in, in, in trying to get any of our work done when we want it done and we're-
That sounds really sad.
Well, it is sad to be barefoot and blind.
It's very frustrating.
That is very sad. We should take a moment and be sad about that.
Okay. I've said my piece.
Okay. No, that's a good point. So-
Clearly, I think we, I'm, I'm saying, my position, whether anybody agrees with me or not, is, is that as a commission, there is a need for reliable, dependable, timely staff assistance that we control and not is left to the whims of other work. I, I don't think there's anybody out there not working that we, we could just bring, bring in. But we need somebody to help us and some commissioners are going to use this more than others. There's no doubt. There may be two or three commissioners that just work this person to death and, and others that never ask for anything. But that's just the way it always goes.
Okay. We have Philbrook?
Well, okay, so I'll just address the two on the bottom here in red, the animal control issue and the workforce development Mamtech thing. I will just tell you, yes, we need to stay in the second quarter. I don't expect any action for monies, you know, until the following year. So, this is not something that we have to worry about getting into the budget, okay, immediately. But it is information that we need to know about, especially the workforce development with Mamtech and that will be a report with Mamtech, okay? And so, we have to make some actions first and so that will be coming forth. Don't, no date yet because we haven't met with Mamtech. The other one is the animal control and humane society. I want people to understand what's going on with animal control because it does affect everybody here. You know, with whether the dogs are running wild or we have nine million cats meowing at our back door or whatever's going on. And I think we all need to understand what's going on with that and where we are because that is a budget item, but not to be asked to be changed this year, okay? And so, that's why, that's why that's on there for future reference. Now, the other, the other thing is, is that I really do, if, just because it's not on my radar, doesn't mean it can't become on my radar, an issue or something. Because we all are different people and we all have different things we work with, thank the Lord, because that makes us more balanced group. And so, one person can bring something forward, put it on my radar and I can learn about it and then we can all benefit about it. Now, you send me the information, it's up to me whether I read it or not, okay? And yes, I would like to have it ahead of time so I have enough time to do all this reading and still practice full-time. But, you know, I, I really appreciate everybody being so, I don't know, energetic is what I would use, energetic and, and really care about what's going on. And that can spill over into some personality issues and all that, but eh, we can kick that to the side because it's not about us, it's about the people we represent and we're trying to take care of. And so, I hope all of us can stay on that level, working well together because it has, it's been really great so far, just like, just like Ann has said. We've all worked really well together and, and I do appreciate that. But I don't always agree with everybody and so I won't always jump on board. If I don't agree with something or if I don't want to go along with something, I won't just jump on board without a thorough discussion and understanding exactly what's going on. So, that's what I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. McKeonan?
Okay. If we can try to wrap this up, maybe? I, I think what would be helpful for me is two things. If commissioners who are interested in, and amazingly, I'm going to disagree with you, Ann, I'm sorry.
Surprised.
That's right.
Oh, okay. More, more to come.
Because, because a lot of times, I don't know enough about a topic to really say, "I'm interested in that or not." So, to go back to your point about, you know, "I really don't care about that," sometimes I don't know enough to care or not to care. So, on these topics, if we could get somebody or buddies who could volunteer to be ready to facilitate the discussion on the night they come forward-
Yeah.
... and who could volunteer to identify good homework prior to those meetings, then I think we'll have the most productive meetings possible. So, I can get my homework done and I can get my background reading done and then somebody else can be ready to facilitate the discussion when they come for us. I think that would probably get the most productive meeting, so.
All right. So, and one last thing. Commissioner Murgia, I understand that you've been working on a press release for some of the priorities for the commission. Why don't you talk a little bit about that?
Okay. So, what happened is because we didn't have this process in place and I personally, myself, I was going to put out a press release for the third district. And then on my own, I thought, you know, "We have such a great commission, everything's going so well. We had such productive strategic planning sessions." Two of them, we all were in unanimous consent on a number of priorities. I said, "You know what? I'll volunteer to draft one for the entire commission." I had several conversations with different commissioners and said, "Hey, what do you think about this?" Because, you know, either do nothing or even if it's good, you're going to get some criticism. So, if you don't want criticism, just friendly advice from being here from seven years, don't do anything if you can't take criticism. So, I'm not going to not do anything.